Good evening. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll first have the oath of office for our newly appointed board member, Mr. Larry Gamble, and if he and Mr. Alex Androvich, our clerk, would go to the front of the room and have the oath of office.
Larry Gamble, you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Franklin School Board Member to the best of your ability to help you guide.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order then, and first, item one is the roll call. You have the roll call, please, Mr. Alex Androvich.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Patz?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? So, motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item four is community comment. Is there any community comment tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to item five, consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements? I would just like to say that I ran into Representative Ken Skoransky out in the public, and he just informed me that with everything going on with the budget, that he would like to keep three school boards in his area informed of any educational issues, so hopefully he'll keep his word on that and he'll let us know what's going on. That's very nice of him. So, item seven is school board calendar. We have regular board meeting on February 22nd, 2017, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM, and a regular board meeting March 8th, 2017, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item eight is the liaison reports. We have 8A Personnel and Policy, Policy 5321, Life Sustaining Emergency Care, which is an action item. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. So you have the most recent revision in front of you. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for providing that. This policy is updated as of today. It hadn't been updated for quite a while. There was revision in '09. We can kind of go through the specifics of the policy. If there are questions, we have our staff here to kind of talk us through those changes. Let you two take it away.
Yeah, good evening.
Aye.
Good evening.
Hi. We just revised this policy to pretty much just reorganize it and look at more recent practice and best practice to reflect that.
Would you mind introducing yourselves for Mr. Gamble?
Oh, I'm Lisa Chase. I'm the school, used to be district nurse. I'm the nurse now for the middle school and the high school.
I'm Lori O'Neil, and I'm the school nurse that covers the elementary schools.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
As I read through this, I saw that there was nothing in here for a healthcare power of attorney, or if the person who is unable to answer any questions for themselves, that person would really have to take charge.
In those cases, the population we have would have an assigned guardian at age 18 during the transition. Those who cannot make decisions for themselves would have an appointed guardian.
So you're saying it's not necessary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do the health plans allow for, and I know they're all individual health plans, but do most of them allow for the staff to provide comfort for students?
Absolutely, and that's the whole purpose, that we'll do everything in our power that we can do without going any further to cause any more damage to the health condition of the patient.
Our ultimate goal is to make these children as comfortable as possible, especially if that's the wishes of their parents and the children.
And are any of the, do the plans also provide for our staff to remove a student from the area into another room?
Yes. It's one of our main goals to provide anybody having any kind of medical emergency with the appropriate privacy, to protect themselves and everybody around them.
In the past, we involved the chief of the fire department to come into the meeting with the parent administrator, and also after we compiled this plan, we will train the staff who is directly working with the patient, with the student, and train them on how to respond and do call 911, and in the meanwhile, this is what we can do for the student. Anything that's to do with pain, what we receive from Children's Hospital is pretty detailed, compressions or no compressions, oxygen, pain comforting measures, all of that is outlined from them, and we'll just make it happen at school and then train the proper personnel.
And Chief Remington from the fire department has seen this policy. He and I collaborated on this to ensure that what their protocol is would be what our protocol would be, to make sure that the care would be the same in school and off school. Thank you.
Can I say something? Just a question, maybe this is getting a little bit too detailed. In the second paragraph, the bolded paragraph, where in the end, the second to the last sentence, where it says, the last part of that sentence reads, "While the student is in school," is it necessary for us to put a little something in there about, or at a school-sponsored activity or anything like that? Is that just getting too in-depth?
I think we could absolutely get that.
Yeah, because we have to think about field trips and all of that.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Want to add, or at a school-sponsored event?
While a student is in school or at a school-sponsored activity, yeah.
Yeah, a field trip. Carolyn Choos.
I'm not, I'm 100% about that, because if they're at a football game, I'm not sure there essentially are responsibility at that time, but a field trip, most definitely. So, school-sponsored event, I think would be the correct, I don't know. I'm just processing that a little bit.
So the problem would be, the way I read it, in school, any activity during school hours is technically in school, it's an extension of the school. If we do, if we do school-sponsored events, I agree that it might extend beyond school hours. An activity, an after-school hours activity would be a school-sponsored event, although it wouldn't necessarily fall within the purview of in school or during school hours.
Because you have to have trained personnel.
Right.
Yeah.
If they're, according to our legal, a while back, we had this discussion related to, actually to expulsions, and if it's a school-sponsored event, that's, they consider that if they're on a field trip, if they're on whatever it might be, they don't designate that if they're at a football game or anything like that. Maybe the key verbiage there should be, "While participating in a school-sponsored event."
In school or participating in a school?
In a school-sponsored event or activity, because that would then encompass if they're at a football game, or if they were on a field trip, whatever. The key word there is participating.
Well, if they're wearing the bracelet, though, that's, that covers.
What's that?
If they're wearing this DNR bracelet, that covers wherever they are, right? Whoever responds will, doesn't it?
Not necessarily. The law is different for children under 18.
Oh. So essentially, if there were a child who is under 18 years of age, and they were after school at an activity, the coach or the advisor would be, need to be fully aware of the court order and the DNR and the process in which to deal with the child if something were to occur. So, you know, are we saying that we would have that in place is kind of the question on the table?
My whole point is that when you say in school, we all get that, but these kids are also part of activities that take place outside of the school boundaries.
It's almost under the supervision of school staff. It's not necessarily in school, at a school function, it's under the supervision of school staff.
Okay.
I would almost want to confirm, I would almost want, you to contact legal counsel to ensure that we have the right language. While they're in school hours, they're under the supervision of the staff. The policy is to protect, obviously, our staff and the district. If they attend a function, they're not under the supervision of the staff at that time, but rather participating in some sort of, under the supervision.
For our supervision.
First, we'll utilize trained school personnel, so we need school personnel at all times available.
Probably a fragile student like this, if this is going to be planned, if a student is in special ed or not, that's, it's going to make a difference if it's in the RAP or not. So, all of those things taken consideration. We had, we had students in the past that we had LPNs with them at all these events, for field trips, for after-school carnivals and that, so we arranged for that, we knew ahead of time. Is that pretty much what you're asking? Because if we need to train someone, that, we have best buddies after school, that we, we have a person attached to the students who need medical protocols to be follow-up. We have that in place right now. If it's to this extent, that this is pretty, a terminal individual, that would be something that we would plan ahead with the parent and with the teachers.
And often, in instances like that, the parents would be with them, but if they would like a child to come, I believe they would reach out to us to help collaborate how they can be safe and everybody be aware of what we should do.
Do we currently have any students identified?
No. In the past 30 years, we had three.
But we thought we would revise the policy before we were in that situation.
It does happen. We do have, had students with that, and we collaborated with the local community resources, and we made the best of their time and to be inclusive, and so they could participate in all school activities.
So perhaps the way we could word this, given the fact that, you know, these students' children are fragile, and our court order for do not resuscitate isn't going to be put in place unless a child's incredibly fragile, but we could award it to say, while the student is in school, under direct supervision of school staff, if that would then allow us to, you know, cover any situation outside, so that I think could be accomplished.
Say that again, you said while the student is in school and?
While the student is in school, under direct supervision of school staff.
While the student is in school or under direct supervision.
Right, you have the word or.
Okay.
And would you consider a football game situation under direct?
Possibly, yes. It could've been arranged for the child to be there.
The parent can choose to take themselves, or can ask us to, to help.
Judy, you just said something about a court-ordered, and as I read through this, I didn't see anything about court order. Is that necessary to have something of that in here?
Well, we've been advised by our legal counsel that because of the way Wisconsin law is situated, we should require that of children that are minors.
Then it'd be a court-ordered DNR.
No, no.
It's in there.
Oh, it is in there?
Yeah.
The student's under the age of 18.
So what this, Wisconsin state law discusses is the qualification is somebody 18 years or older, so there isn't law about do not resuscitate orders for minors, so what usually happens is the family makes this decision in collaboration with the medical team. So what legal counsel has advised us is we would just need a court order for us to follow that plan. That's already been established.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Can you hold up questions?
All right, then we're looking for a motion to approve revised board policy 5321 with the addition also that was just added.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 8B is the school board liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item nine, reports and presentations. We have 9A, the pupil services report, school counselors report.
First of all, I'd like to mention that this is National School Counselors Week, so I want to make mention of the team. We do have four documents that we gave to both in board docs as well as paper copies. And today, our coordinator, Catherine Reed, will be doing a brief presentation to give you an update on the annual, her annual school counselor report, but I'd also like to mention that we have other people here today. We have Mindy Greco, Bernadette Van Leeve, Keith Decker, Diane Gilroy, Mindy Willard, and Beth Hemmer, our district school counselors. So, Catherine?
Catherine Reed was the Wisconsin School Counselor of the Year, and you just got back from Washington, correct? Did you go to Washington?
Yes, I did.
How was it?
It was fantastic.
Great.
Thanks for mentioning that. It was, it was a great honor to be there at the White House, at Michelle Obama's final speech with 49 other school counselors from across the world, across the country. They are all wonderful people, as you might imagine, so that was, it was a great experience. So, thank you. Thanks for hosting this update for you. We came here last year to talk about our school program goals, our school counseling program goals. We are back to help you see where we have come so far in the last year. As Ms. Preman mentioned, you have some handouts with you that you can refer to before and after this presentation. The mindsets and behaviors are, are the school counseling national standards. Those are the standards that we use to help guide our teaching. We have an interesting handout, developed by the American School Counseling Association, Conversation Starters. Those are questions that we and others can use with young people to help them understand how they can move forward in terms of their academic and career planning. We have developed some grade level outcomes for academic and career planning, and we have a highlight document highlighting grade level outcomes for students at the grades five, eight, and 12 for you. And then finally, our accountability report for the high school is included. It's called the WICSPAR. That is a document that we submitted to the Wisconsin School Counselor Association, highlighting the data-driven program at the high school, so we'll talk a little bit about that in a bit. And we'll hopefully have some time at the end for questions. I'm going to try to move fairly quickly. I tend to be a little bit, little bit long-winded, so I will do my very best. This slide demonstrates the three domains that school counseling covers in our programs. And wanted to give you a little bit of background in terms of how we orient our program. We focus on academic, career, and social-emotional areas. These are examples of some of the activities that take place, that school counselors focus on and work with students to help move them forward. We'll refer to some of those domains throughout the presentation. Last year, we talked with you about how school counseling has changed over the years and how the program in Franklin has changed to a data-driven program, where we are looking at what we do and how it makes a difference for students. We're back to share some of that data and highlight some of the unique innovations that Franklin counselors are implementing to help our students become college and career-ready. In one of your handouts, that college and career-ready senior is able to articulate a clear post-secondary plan, they can provide clear evidence of their goals, they're able to access and apply strategies to meet those goals and overcome challenges. They know how to find resources, and they can embrace opportunities that support their growth. They look for and find opportunities to experience the career areas of their choice, to learn about financial assistance and ways to pay for their, for their training after high school. They're able to cultivate really strong relationships with mentoring adults in school, and use those relationships to help them find their way. And finally, they are flexible in their thinking, and they're able to adjust their plans and goals as they need to, depending on the landscape of the career world. So, this is just an example of how we envision students being ready at the end of the work that we do with academic and career planning. While college and career readiness encompasses a lot of academic and work-based performance skills, we also recognize the importance that these key mindsets and behaviors that bring success in almost every aspect of a student's future life are developed, and we begin developing those in our school counseling program at the elementary school level. Students at the elementary school have opportunities to learn the mindsets and behaviors that help them to progress and become those college and career-ready students, and part of that is working on the social-emotional area, that domain of social-emotional learning. And part of what we do is help students to understand how to have appropriate relationships and treat each other with respect, and how to respond when there are difficulties in their relationships in one of those areas, this bullying. So, in our elementary program, Mrs. Hemmer, our elementary school counselor, last year, in 2015, 16, this is her goal from last year, she observed data from the Gallup survey and information from a pre-test for her curriculum, and identified that about 85 to 89% of her students felt safe at school, but there's a portion of students that did not feel safe at school. So her goal was to increase the number of students who reported feeling safe at school. After three counselor lessons, her, her data indicated that 93.4% of those students then felt safe. The curriculum that she uses is called ACT NOW. This is an online bullying prevention program developed and delivered from Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, and it helps students differentiate between conflict and bullying, build interpersonal skills, learn about empathy, and apply these skills to their online social interactions and in their interactions in person. We know that online social interactions is a new issue for students these days, so that learning is really important. She continued to work on this goal because those, you know, building interpersonal skills, empathy, and healthy respectful behaviors continues into middle school and high school, and we know that it's associated with success in careers as well. And so that, that goal continued, and her long-term goal is to raise that above 95%. So students, you know, feeling safe at school, knowing that they have someone to go to at school if something happens, that they know how to respond if something happens that is, that is uncomfortable or of a bullying nature. In the world of academic and career planning at the elementary level, students in sixth grade learn to write a SMART goal that is developed later on in middle school and in high school and used toward their career planning. So learning how to write a SMART goal is a very important step for us in academic and career planning. At the beginning of her lessons this year, she found that students did not know how to write, 37% of students knew how to identify the components of a SMART goal. By the end of her lessons, 96.9% of students could accurately report what a SMART goal is. Part of that SMART goal lesson includes other aspects of academic and career planning. Students learn about their learning styles and what kinds of strengths they bring to school and to their planning for the future, and they use that in their transitioning from the elementary to the middle school. I'll talk about transition conferences in a little while, but I have an example of a student from Mrs. Hemmer's lessons who created a presentation of his academic and career plan, so you can see from what he says what he's learned about himself.
Hello, my name is Dimitri Pandalise. I go to Ben Franklin Elementary School, and my, this is my academic and career planning Mrs. Hemmer had us do something called Career Matchmaker. This was a set of questions that paired us up with 40 careers. One of the careers that I saved from Career Matchmaker was a taxidermist. I saved it because my brother used to be a taxidermist, so I would have someone to teach me and the equipment, too. Also, I find it interesting how bones are cleaned or the animal is stuffed, because it's cool to see the first initial step and the end product. I might think about being a taxidermist as my career. I would also consider working for or owning a skate shop, because I'm really passionate about skateboarding and want to do something that interests me. We also took a learning styles inventory where we learned how we learn best. I learned that I was a tactile learner. I agree with this, because while I'm trying to think through a problem, I often like to do something physical, and that helps me more than most things. I also like to take breaks during schoolwork to do something else such as exercise. Being a tactile learner means I learn best by doing hands-on things such as rewriting my notes or typing them onto a computer, thinking through a problem while doing something physical like exercise, making diagrams, notes, and flashcards as a way of being physical with the information, and taking short breaks for physical activity when studying. Some of my hobbies and interests that I like to do outside of school are skateboard, play basketball, play with my friends, and go on the computer. When I'm playing with my friends, it varies what I am doing depending on the friend. When I'm playing with Adam, I'm most likely skateboarding, but when I'm playing with Shane, we will go outside and play football or stay inside and play video games. Mrs. Hemmer's had us write a SMART goal. SMART stands for Specific, Measurable, Attainable, Realistic, and Time-Based. My SMART goal is, by the end of the second trimester on March 7th, I will get a 3.5 for in science for the justification area by paying more attention in class, studying 15 to 20 minutes four times a week in my Science Finder, making flashcards with science vocabulary, and reviewing them every night, and I will write more specific answers in class for practice and study. Mrs. Hemmer also had us write a journal entry about what we are doing to plan for middle school, and I said that I am doing things socially and academically. Something I'm doing socially is trying to have a wide variety of friends, so that if I get split up from one friend, I will always have another. I'm also doing things academically to prepare for middle school. One example is that I am paying attention in class so that I can learn and get good grades. This is helping me because I will understand the subjects more in middle school. That is what I'm doing to prepare for middle school. Thanks for watching. Thanks for watching and listening.
Really nice example of how a student really is coming to understand himself and now can communicate that to important other people in his life at school. And students transitioning from elementary schools to middle schools will do that in their transition events in May where they will be presenting who they are and how they learn and what their goals are to a small group of staff at the middle school for their transition conference, and they'll have opportunities during that time to learn more about how they can meet those goals at the middle school level. So I'm also excited to share the work of our middle school counselors, Mindy Greco and Bernadette Van Lith, who are maximizing their opportunities to provide direct services to students in seventh and eighth grade in those three domains of academic, social-emotional, and career development. An example from last year of a program goal, counselors found that students were struggling with their understanding of what career clusters are. This made career exploration and planning for high school a little bit more difficult for students. So their goal for seventh and eighth grade was to increase students' knowledge of career clusters, and they were able to do that, increasing that from forty-eight percent to about eighty percent. In order to reach that goal, they came up with some very creative ways to do that, including creating career cluster visuals that they promoted throughout the school. They utilized a career cluster trivia contest, a career cluster hunt. They've started our Career Cafe program where professionals and industry folks come in and speak to students about their careers and their career clusters. And students created a career cluster video in which they acted out each cluster, and that was shown to students during home base. So they were able to put together a number of different activities to make this a whole school-wide effort, and that results in our students really understanding a lot more about career clusters. It's just an important aspect of planning for the future. This year, for 2016-2017, the counselors are analyzing data from a lot of different sources, and one of the things that they noticed that was predominant was that students who had entered Franklin Public Schools after fifth grade tended to have more office referral visits and health room visits. And so they started to analyze that information and came up with a new student program where those new-to-Franklin students could make peer and adult connections. They formalized that process of orienting those new students. They understood the procedures, expectations, so the students could feel more connected. And we're able to see a dramatic decrease in the number of office referrals and health room referrals so that we know that students are in class and learning. We expect to see results in their academic performance as a result. Just to give you an idea of how instruction is delivered at Franklin, at Forest Park, counselors have access to students, they have the support of the administration here so that they can get into the classroom through the home base, which they have opportunities weekly to get in and see students. And they deliver instruction using a variety of methods, using technology with screencasts and Google Classroom postings. Students are involved using our online career development tool, Career Cruising. And then, you know, counselors are in front of them in person as well as delivering those virtual lessons. And they also participate in the encore classes and through PE and health. So their, students are seeing their counselors frequently at the middle school level. Another example of how and when students are receiving that instruction is with organization, study skills, time management in seventh grade. Students receive that instruction three Wednesdays in a month, and the counselors preview the standard and help students understand where they fit, what their needs are, so that they can personalize that instruction for that student and individualize that for them. And then in the, finally, in the third Wednesday home base, they are able to demonstrate the growth in that skill. So there's a course of instruction that students and the counselors work with the students to follow through. And the results of that instruction shows a pretty dramatic increase in the students' knowledge. This perception data is really important for students to understand that they know how to manage their time, how to manage stress, they know how to write a SMART goal, and they have awareness of how to organize themselves. And we know that that creative and comprehensive work that the middle school counselors are engaging in will lead to successful high school students. In fact, recently, the high school has been looking at our data, and we are noticing a similar trend in terms of students who are new to Franklin Public Schools coming in, maybe in eighth grade or early in ninth grade, that they are having similar types of issues. So we are going to model some of what the middle school has identified and use what they've learned to help our students. To briefly go over our goals from last year, this is an example of one of our goals from last year where we identified students aligned with the school-building goal of moving students further along toward college readiness in terms of the ACT academic preparation. We identified twenty-seven juniors who were not college-ready as a result of their ACT Aspire scores, and we worked with them on test-taking strategies. This is our wheelhouse. We can't really instruct them in math and reading, but we can help them to learn success strategies that help them reduce anxiety, be prepared for the test, and other ways. So we offered workshops for students, and we're able to participate in them being ready in a different way. This year, we're focusing on our freshmen. This is a diagram of freshman failure rates over the last three years, starting in 2013-14. There's been a nice decrease in the rate of failure of freshmen, but we still had eight-and-a-half percent of freshmen failing one or more courses in a year. And, you know, those parents don't want their students to have a failing grade, so neither do we. So our goal this year is to reduce that, and we're hoping to get to the point where we have no more than five point five percent as a reasonable growth measure. So we are implementing some strategies to help those students hang in there and maintain One of the lessons that we've delivered to help us meet this goal is to work with students to help them understand the importance of passing their classes. We have a lesson, High School 101, and ninth-grade transcript lesson where the students really have an opportunity to digest what a transcript is and how it is a long-lasting, permanent document and the repercussions of good grades and not-so-good grades has on them for their future. So that helps students to have a context for the high school and how that's different from the middle school. We have some innovations that I just want to help you understand, some of the things that we are putting in place to build academic and career planning in the district. I mentioned the Forest Park Career Cafe days. Students have opportunities for exposure to a lot of, to a variety of careers. At the high school, we have a couple of new things that we are working on. We developed Academic and Career Planning Week where students have an opportunity to engage with all teachers. Teachers are helping students to understand the courses and careers that relate to those courses in their content area. So all teachers are presenting during this week, and students then can have a chance to confer with those teachers and try to help make choices in terms of high school course selection. But then again, also, how can this help me lead to a career that is in your area? In addition to that, we have our virtual day coming up, the first virtual day, and I can explain that a little bit. The ACT is being delivered to all juniors in Franklin across the state February 28th. On that day, ninth, tenth, and twelfth graders will not be reporting to the school for classes, but they will be completing academic and career planning lessons that counselors have developed. So those lessons will be delivered virtually. Students will have access to that work through a website. They will be doing, completing some additional Career Cruising work, doing college and post-high school education option comparisons, completing five-year plans of courses in school and beyond, analyzing financial aid opportunities, making plans, developing resumes. So a variety of activities for ninth, tenth, and twelfth grade students, so they will have that opportunity to really dig deep into their planning for the future. So we'll have another virtual day, April 25th, when ninth and tenth graders will be testing in the school. We will have eleventh and twelfth graders completing some additional academic and career planning work. So our goal for those, for that day in April is to really help our juniors and seniors start taking steps beyond just planning, but getting out and experiencing some things, doing a college visit, or having a job shadow, or an informational interview with someone in your profession and the career of your choice. So we have some plans for that coming up. In addition, we are working on a plan to offer an opportunity for students and parents to connect with school opportunities as well as community opportunities. We are calling it ACP Plan Your Future Night. That name may change, but it will be next year, and we will, we are hoping to bring in members of the community, business partners, professionals, who will be able to help our students, grades eight through twelve, for this first year, to learn about what's out there, learn about the labor market, find out what the career path is, and learn from professionals in our community how students can begin to make those decisions. I mentioned our transition conferences. This is a really important part of what we do to help students prepare for the next level. At the elementary level, I mentioned earlier, students will complete a presentation, like Dimitri's, where they will be presenting that to a group of middle school staff in May when they are transitioning to the middle school and learning about what it means to be a middle school student. They will also be presenting about themselves. In eighth grade, we are looking forward to our current eighth graders coming up to the high school in April and doing a similar presentation to mentoring teachers and mentoring students, where our eighth graders will be able to indicate who they are as learners, what their long-term goals are, how they want to be involved in the high school, and be able to have, to begin that important, close relationship with important people at the high school to help them transition appropriately. And then finally, at the high school, we lead, we offer student-led individual conferences where counselors meet with each eleventh-grade student and their parent or guardian in the fall, where we really detail what that student's planning is for the next year and beyond in high school. So those are our transition conferences, and we're excited to implement them fully. We've been doing the junior conferences for a couple of years now. This year, we did have one hundred percent of our students participate, but we're very encouraged and excited about having our elementary, middle school transition conferences this year as well. A brief discussion about social-emotional programming in Franklin. We are in the process of digging into what we have been doing and what we want to be doing in terms of universal instruction for students around their social-emotional needs. So our process this year is to determine a research-based protocol for this and align that model to the American School Counseling Association Mindsets and Behaviors, our standards, determine what's happening at each building, looking at the data for student behavior, attendance, and determining what our interventions and what our teaching will be. So as a team, we will be working with Mrs. Preman on that in developing a social-emotional We've had some good news. Mrs. Evans mentioned the School Counselor of the Year. Thanks, I was very happy to go and represent Wisconsin. Mindy Willard was there as well for the ten-year reunion. We have some other, you know, important things that are happening. The WICSPAR that I mentioned earlier, that is this document they have a copy of. Our Wisconsin School Counselor Association offers an opportunity for schools to report on their evidence of school counseling in the school, and we received word that our accountability report would receive recognition at the conference in February and later this month. So I'm very proud that that was accepted and that we will receive recognition for that. That means that we are a program of promise in terms of our data and our programming for students. In addition to that, we have an opportunity, Mindy Willard has received an offer to help us become ASCA Model Trainers. We are all learning the American School Counseling Association model and learning how to implement that in schools, and we're a little bit ahead of the game in terms of other schools in the state. We have an opportunity to learn how to be trainers so that we can also help other schools to do the same thing. So that is something that we'll be looking into at the conference at the end of February and again in May to receive that training, so we'll be able to help other schools. And I think that's the end of my presentation. What questions do you have for us?
I have a question. So we know that parents influence kids, obviously, and how are, do we still have the mindset that, you know, all kids college? Or where are parents at in terms of this new methods of how to pick a career?
It's such a great question, and it's one of the reasons that we are looking to build in opportunities for parents to hear about a variety of opportunities for students. So this Plan Your Future Night would be an example of that. One of the reasons we end up focusing a lot on college is because it is the most challenging effort that students may approach, and we want students to be ready for college. We know that college, in a number of ways, leads to longer life, better earnings over a lifetime. And so it is important for our students to be academically prepared for that, but it isn't the only option. We recognize that, and we recognize that there are other excellent options for students. One of the things that we're really fortunate about at the high school is that we have an incredible career and tech ed program where students can explore many options that are not necessarily a four-year college, connected to a four-year college or a career where you need a four-year degree. So I would say that parents, in some ways, are open to many ideas, but there is a perception that all of our students need to go to a four-year college. So we're hoping to help parents understand that there are many options. We want students to drive their planning, and, you know, most of the time, the students are aligned with what their parents are thinking. And through this, multiple opportunities to really assess who they are, how they learn, what they're good at, what their strengths are, what their interests are, they really can identify ways, ways of, pathways for the future that may or may not be college-required.
I know we don't have a real strong connection with our alumni, but do we ever, I'm really curious if you were to do a survey of our seniors one year after high school, how dramatically changed their, or what their...
How they've changed their ideas.
I don't know if this is still true, but don't fifty percent of college freshmen leave college or change college?
There is a lot of movement. I think nationally, I think it's fifty-four percent. I could be wrong on this statistic, but I think about fifty-four percent of students change their direction after entering college. Yes, it would be interesting to survey alumni and have them report back and find out more details.
What they know, what they knew then that they could have known and maybe made a better decision, I don't know. I don't have the answer here, but...
I just want to say that I really appreciate how, that first, that you're all here and that you all support each other and that you all appear to be really linked into the students, and that just really shows. And, but I do have a question about the goal to reduce the failing class in the high school. I don't see how you can do that on your own without support from the teachers, too. So how do you do that? How do you bring the teachers in with you?
It's definitely not us alone. And, and my colleagues can jump in on this any, at any time, but it's definitely a team effort. So we collaborate with administrators, first of all, to identify students who are in trouble early on. So we're taking measures of how many students are struggling in October, and then at quarter one, and so on, so that we can start to make efforts to implement interventions. One of the things we've done at the high school is through our resource period, it's now called Gold Block. Students have an opportunity to build a relationship with a specific teacher. So we collaborate with those teachers and identify, so Joe is struggling in math. I know that you see Joe in Gold Block four times a week. What are you seeing? Is he going to see his teacher? Let's see if we can get him to go see his teacher. And so that's one effort that we make, so that close relationship between that teacher and Joe can help. And then we collaborate with the teachers that, where Joe is having some difficulty, and we bring in parents as well. So often, there is a parent, teacher, counselor, student meeting. Let's try to figure out what's happening here, how can we move you forward? And we plug them into resources and refer them for tutoring. We have wonderful tutors at the high school, other high school students who provide peer tutoring, so that they have multiple ways that they can address the issue. Meanwhile, we're also looking at their, their emotional health to find out what's behind it. Are they missing a lot of school? Is it because of stress or anxiety or family problems at home? Can we bring them in for some counseling and help them to get some things off their chest? Or find ways to build supports in school that help them want to come to school? So it's definitely a whole-team effort. That's definitely not represented in that data, as you saw it there. But it's, it's not a solo job at all.
I think it's a great goal, so good luck.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much for your support and for coming.
Thank you.
Item 9B is the Business Services Report, the Audit Report. Mr. Millsor.
Yes, tonight, we have our financial audit report for 2015-16. And to give us that report, we have Ryan Mecknick from Riley Penner and Benton, our audit firm. And also our comptroller, Michelle Ochuski, is with us tonight.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Brian Mecknick. I am the partner on the engagement for the district's audit. I'll just first go over the, the financial highlights. And if you have any questions, you can let me know. We've, the financial statements are presented fairly, so you have an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what you're looking for. We had no problems that were encountered during the audit via the full cooperation of staff. One thing you'll notice, the audit report is late this year. They're due to the state on December 1st. We issued your report on December 22nd. The Wisconsin Retirement System was supposed to have their numbers to us beginning of September, and then beginning of October, then the end of October. We finally got them like the second week of December. So not a single district in the state filed their audit reports on time this year, so. So that's why we're later than normal. So your financial results, your general fund, you had an increase in your fund balances. You have $2,254,000. Your fund balances at the end of the year were at, you had non-spendable, which is due to prepaid expenses, that was at $622,000. And then you have unassigned fund balance of $18,678,000. Your general fund expenditures, you budgeted $50,225,000. Your actual expenditures were at $48,476,000. So you spent 96.52% of your budget, which is good. Revenues, you budgeted $50,225,000. Your actual revenues were $50,714,000. So you received 100.97% of your budget, so. And then your debt activity, you had payments on your long-term debt this year of $2,240,000, interest payments of $926,000. And then on your audit, we, as your GASB adjustments, the governmental-wide, we accrue for the other post-employment benefit. And this is based on your actuary study, actuary study that you had done as of July 1st of 2014, in that annual OPEB stipend cost was $1,509,000. Contributions made were at $1,620,000. So at the end of the year, your net OPEB stipend obligation was at $11,360,000. You will actually be due for a new actuary studies as of July 1st of 2016, which will be used for the June 30th, 2017 audit, so. Then we also have your, your GASB 68, which is the Wisconsin Retirement System accrual. These are the numbers that we're waiting on. Your deferred outflows related to pensions is at $17,150,000. Your net pension liability is $3,259,000. And your deferred inflows are at $6,921,000. So your net pension restricted for the Wisconsin Retirement System is at $6,969,000. So there was a change in the pension this year of $2 million. Then we also have the, we report significant deficiencies, material weaknesses. If there are any, we had same significant deficiency that we have every year, and that's the preparation of the financial statements, because the audit report, except for the opinion, is the responsible, responsibility of the district. Majority of districts have their auditors prepared, and then they assign someone to actually review it and ask questions. And Michelle and Jim actually asked questions, so we know they are looking at it. But that's still considers, it's considered a significant deficiency. There was a one additional one this year for adjusting journal entries. We made a, what we felt the financial statements would have been misstated if we did not make that entry, and that was for $331,000. There were some expenses that were for the next school year that were expensive this year. So we actually made that as a prepaid, so that's why the prepaid was higher from last year. There were no federal single audit findings. As part of the state, we are required to show a finding related to the journal entry because, because of your, your state aid that you receive based on the expenses, so. That's, otherwise, it was a clean audit. We do issue a management letter, we have a communications with governance. We have a couple additional comments, or we have one other comment in there. And we took a look at your credit card usage that the district has. We also took a look at the credit limits on the credit cards, and they were anywhere from $20,000 up to $500,000 credit limit. We recommend the, probably $500,000 too high of a credit limit on a credit card. So we recommend that you guys take a, a look at these, the credit limits, because it'll help reduce your risk of misappropriation of assets with credit cards. And then the other comment is that you, you'll be required to have a new actuary, actuary study completed this year. Any questions?
Don't you, isn't there a significant review of the usage of the credit card to see that the expenses are not...
The district has, has policies in place. That's after someone's been using the card, they turn the receipts in. So if, if someone really wanted to, they could charge everything up in one month and leave, I guess. And you would be responsible for those charges. So, not saying that could happen, it could happen. A lot of times where we see issues with credit cards, where they're not having people turn in their credit card receipts on a time and basis, or, or they don't have, they're not turning their receipts in, and they let them keep their card, we see issues with that as well. But you guys have controls in place. We take a look to make sure that receipts are, are being included, which they are. But I still think the credit limit of half a million dollars on a card for one individual person's a little high.
Is that one person, or is it basically like a, a purchasing card used in the district? Is there, is there really a one-person card? That's for...
There's individual cards.
That's what?
There's individual cards for individual people.
And one person has $500,000 limit?
Yeah, in the technology department.
And the $300,000 of the prepaid that he's referring to, that was for, she purchased computers. So that's not unlikely. You know, I mean, it was all at one time.
No, I, I get it, because not only do you purchase, but then before the bill is due, you have another 25 days or so where you're making additional purchases. So whatever you spend on average per month, you probably need a limit of twice that if, if you're using it for a lot of spending.
It's a tough call, because you don't want a situation where you have fraud. On the other hand, you have somebody like Wan who was purchasing technology equipment. She doesn't have a high enough limit. She's, I mean, it stops her dead in her tracks from being able to do anything, so.
And we probably get 1% back or something like that on the card?
1.6.
1.6? So it's, it's an advantage to use that card as much as possible.
Right, right. But I, we just recommend take a look, because there's probably some people that hardly ever use their cards, that the limit's pretty high, so.
You do audit... Go ahead, Linda.
Can you make exceptions after, you know, you have the limit, but then you make an exception? So there's at least a trigger for further review, and then you can still run the transaction, but somebody else would have to come through. I don't know how hard it is to change the limit, so is that...
We've run into that before, because in technology, we also have purchases $700,000, $800,000 at once. So we've had to do that as well.
You do audits for other school districts, I'm assuming?
What's that?
You do audits for other districts? Do you see credit card limits in this region?
We haven't really seen them that high. Well, usually the IT person's credit limit is higher. But I think overall, there were quite a few cards that were higher in your district than probably need to be. So not saying that you shouldn't have like that for the IT person. Just take a look at, at what people's limits are and pretty much what their spending history is. Because there's probably people that have cards that are limited of $20,000, and they probably rarely use the card. So do they really need that, that high of a credit limit?
And we did look at that afterwards, and almost all those people were reduced.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, this is a simple question. On page 10, on the expected impact of known events. In the second paragraph, it says, "The resident student census of the district is expected to fluctuate over the next five years due to the economy." Where do you get that information from, for Franklin?
That's...
That comes from us.
Is it from you?
That's from you guys, yeah. This is the management discussion. So this, this whole section, the first 10 pages of the audit report are the district, it's from the district.
Oh, where do we get that information specifically to Franklin, related to the economy?
We know, we know our past, and we know what's happened. When the economy is booming, we have a lot of students coming in, because we have a lot of new homes being built. When the economy isn't doing so good, we have some changeover, and we have been moving ahead, kind of slowly compared to what we were in the past. So when we take a look at that, that's where that comes from.
Okay. Do you, so then on page 14, that would be you?
That would be me.
Okay. Then can you just explain to me, on page 14, under reconciliation?
Yep.
Can you just clarify what the district's proportionate share of the WRS pension plan exceeds its obligation? This is reported as a liability on the statement of net position, but it's not reported in the government funds, what that means?
Okay, so like, your governmental funds are like your, your day-to-day activities. So you guys pay into the WRS, and those show up as expenses in the governmental funds. So you really don't, you don't have a liability or an asset for those payments that you've made. And this is like GASB 34 adjustments that we make for the, the statements on page 11 and 12 of the governmental activities. So we actually accrue those back in, and we make adjustments from the current year to what the actuary report shows for that activity. So the, the numbers that actually get reported to DPR are the governmental funds. They, they don't, the only time they see any of this is the audit, once they receive the audit report. So what the state is worried about is really pages 13, 15, 17, and then the supplementary schedules for the, for the general fund and special education. Because it's the same with like your, your assets for the building. When you purchase something, they're expensed. And then when we go through, we make adjustments in this section as well to put them onto the governmental activities.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
It's confusing.
A little bit. That's all I had.
I don't know if this question would be for you or for Jim, but that OPEB number 11.6, is that working its way down annually? Are we still working our way up before we see the number coming down?
Yeah, it'll go up before it comes down. I think when we looked at it, when we made the changes, it was in the 2020, 2025 area, when it would peak, and then start to come down after that. But until that time, we're generally not paying out as much as our, our average, the ARC, the average that we're supposed to, to pay for the whole thing over time. But we will catch up to that, and then we'll be ahead of it.
Okay. You know how much higher that's gonna go off the top?
No.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right, item 9C is the key work of school board's discussion on chapter 5. And that is the board and superintendent's relationship. And as most of us know, we've discussed this when we do our board evaluation. Did anyone want to start off with any comments on it at all? I don't know how much in-depth we want to get on it, but, um, the key to this was having respect between the board and the superintendent, each of our backgrounds and abilities, and respect for each of our roles.
I thought the, the comment about, or the discussion in here about level 1, 2, 3, and 4, as far as identifying different roles, different activities, and then assigning different levels to it, I thought that was an interesting way of looking at it, because we always have that, we always have that gray area. But especially as new members come into the board, or there's turnover, what is a board role, what is superintendent role?
Right.
So that might be an interesting exercise.
Such as that retreat, going through that?
Maybe, you know, have some questions of where would that fall in level 1, 2, 3, and 4, and see whatever its perception is.
Or doing it at another, another meeting?
No, probably not, probably not have a, have a meeting, though. And I'm not even so sure that that would have to be an exercise as much as something you can just review and go over in your own, in your own mind. But I also think this is an area that's got a fair amount of emphasis from this board over the last number of years. Some of our retreat discussions, some of the speakers we had come in, this has been a, been a topic for those that have been on the board for any number of years. Do you agree, board superintendent relationship?
I think so. And then on those levels, you know, be prepared, be professional. Professional, you know, your attitude, your tone, your behavior. Be fair and objective. Be open-minded, consider alternative solutions, and be honest and open. Don't use your office to benefit special interest groups, which include employees and school groups, and be a team player. Support the majority. I think those are all important things to remember as a board member. And then to grow and evolve. And be a team, working towards student achievement. Those are all things I picked up in here that I think were important as a board member. But something else I thought that was important was, for us as board members, understanding, we need to understand the public view, all seven of us, and our board's personal knowledge and experience. And then as far as the superintendent versus, and the administration, because they're under Steve, their professional training and experience. So, so we're, our personal knowledge and experience, and they are the professionals, and have the experiences, so that's where we... So that's where we draw the line between us. So I think that's important to remember. But we need the partnership between us. Anyone else?
I just think that a lot of this seems to make a co, it's common sense. And because we have such a very good administrative staff here, it's, it's easy to just, I mean, do this. E- easy from the standpoint that, you know, there, there's not a lot of wrangling.
It's not always so easy because of that, that fine line that we each tend to cross over. I mean, I think board members tend to cross over a little more than the superintendent. We were discussing it the other day. It's just that little fine line and it's easy to cross over.
Yeah, I'll try not to do that.
It's just, it's just hard to not do, so.
I'd be curious to know if, Steve, if you had any particular takeaways from this chapter?
No, you know, I think there are things that we've talked about, uh, every year in here, and it, but I think there are also, everything, I highlighted several things in here that Janet just mentioned. Actually, most of them aren't highlighted. I think it, it needs, I think there's a place for different parts of this to be discussed during the course of the year that we automatically do. Like I think Alan, what you referred to, some of this is common sense, we take it, we just naturally do it. Or don't do it, whatever the case may be. But I think it's important, uh, you know, that we, because there's always, you know, who's, who's crossing whose line and so on and so forth. And when that happens, I think the key there is just to have that discussion and say, here's, here's how we should do it, how we shouldn't do it or so on. I think a lot of these things are, uh, you know, I think there's been a dramatic improvement on these things over a couple, you know, particularly the last several years. Where I think we can take a look at all these things and say, let's just make sure that we, we know what's here. And I think it, it also comes out, I think, in, as Janet said, in the evaluation form as well.
I felt the evaluation portion of this was a huge takeaway, you know, as it makes a point about being fair and objective. You know, I think we've looked at the board evaluation process, you know, as updating that being a good first start, you know, where, where we can truly receive objective feedback on criteria that we've established. Um, and then extend that to not just between the seven board members, but also the administrative team to receive that feedback, I think was, um, i- is really valuable. And then secondly, you know, it obviously talks about the superintendent's performance evaluation. And, you know, I, I almost, in reading that section, because it, it kind of said to, to review the superintendent's evaluation, and I think we probably have in the past very, very consistently with how it's outlined, but a look at the past of what's occurred, but more as a future planning session during that evaluation. So I think, you know, it's something that we should even think about, you know, Steve, for your next evaluation, to really look at, you know, do we want a punch list, a bullet list of things that we've potentially tackled, you know? Yeah, we have obviously the referendum, middle school referendum, some high-level points, but maybe there's some bullet points that we aren't aware of. Some day-to-day issues that, that you might wanna to make us aware of what's going on. But then secondly, look at the planning process moving forward. You know, whether some of those things should be a focus moving forward, shouldn't be because we're focusing on other goals. Um, but I think that objectivity for us would be helpful, um, to have some concrete examples of this. We did, you know, we had, you know, X and X situation occur and this is how it was handled. That was an example of, of me handling the day-to-day operations within the district. Moving forward, this, this situation may not occur or hopefully will not occur because X, Y, and Z has been implemented in place moving forward. I think that type of evaluation, you know, not only would be beneficial for us, but then it would also, it kind of highlight what you've done throughout the past year a- at the ten thousand foot level and then almost using three to four examples of, of a situation that was handled within the district. I think that almost works really well with how we've revamped our board evaluation to, to provide for either specific examples in paragraph form, word form, whatever, whatever the, the example section of our evaluation was per category. But then that also provides us with that specific feedback to then implement and go forward plan. If that makes sense for you.
Yeah. Are, are you recommending that we, and I, I can't remember, I think it was four years ago, we went over the superintendent's evaluation policy? Are you recommending we look at that or are you just suggesting to Steve? Yeah, Melissa was on it, I was on it, and I think you, you might have been on it.
I, I don't know if we necessarily have to go over it. Um, I, I just think as, as a practical matter.
Yeah.
It, it, it would aid me, but I think it would also highlight, you know, Steve does a lot of stuff, the administrative team does a lot of stuff. And if we review at a high level and say, okay, the, the middle school, which was a ton of work, the middle school referendum was a success, okay, check that off the list. And then, you know, what else, what else do we have to objectively evaluate and, and discuss? Because I think, you know, you don't wanna be talking about the whole evaluation time about a middle, about the middle school referendum, even though that was huge. But there's so much other stuff that goes into your day-to-day that, you know, I think it's.
We could give you a pretty good list. We could give you some dandies that. The last two days, we could tell you some good stories.
But I think that's a benefit, it's a benefit to you, it's a benefit to everybody to say this, these are some of the issues that we went through. This is how it was handled and this is our proactive plan. Or how we've handled it matches what we wanna do moving forward. Um, I, I think that's, I think that'd be helpful for everybody.
That's a good idea. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Item ninety is the superintendent's report, construction update and foundation update.
We just had a construction meeting on Tuesday and it was, uh, I guess, I would call them exciting because I think it's an opportunity for us to look at the space. We're still juggling spaces all over the place. We, we looked at taking one of the wings that we have and moving it to the east and then we said, no, let's move it back to the north and, uh, but there were so many reasons behind that, just in terms of vision that we were having, in terms of classroom windows. I mean, our, our architects, I think, are, are just outstanding. I think they, they questioned us, uh, they listened to us, but they posed all these questions. We're, the discussions we had were taking a look at on the front of the building, how much glass do we have, what does that do for energy? Do you want clear glass? Do you want tinted glass? Here's a different type of glass. We talked about where the sun went down, where the sun comes up. I mean, uh, it's, it's pretty in-depth stuff, but the most important part of it is we're talking about where do we want classroom space, learning spaces and those kinds of things. They brought a number of things up, so Chris and Nick and I and Aaron is heavily involved in this. Talk about what do we want those programs to be, not only now, but five years down the road, ten years down the road, uh, and those kinds of things. Um, so I think they're starting to get a real good, solidified picture of how our spaces will be configured. Um, I think it won't be too long, we'll be able to bring something to you to say, okay, here's a schematic of what this whole thing could look like. Uh, we're also very conscious of the boundaries that we have in terms of wetlands. I just had a conversation yesterday with our neighbor to the east over there. Uh, you might remember him, he was at one of our board meetings. A nice guy, has a couple of very legitimate concerns and we're gonna be involving him in that process because there are some drainage issues is one of the things that. Whenever, when did they grade that area across? Does anybody know? When that was made into soccer fields? Well, whenever it was, it's.
A long time ago.
It was the start of his yard flooding, according to him, so.
It was at least by, by nineteen ninety-five.
Okay.
But the architect said that anything that we do here, uh, we're required to keep the water in, on our land, so doesn't that kind of take away his problem?
It does to some degree, but if you just drive down the road, Alan, you'll see a slope and everything that's really natural, that just flows into his yard and the next yard.
Okay.
Uh, matter of fact, I, I asked somebody on our staff to go take some pictures a couple of days ago when it was warm. I wanted to see where water was sitting now before we ever started construction. But I think, uh, he's a great guy to work with. We're, you know, we're gonna, I think have a good partnership with him and we wanna make sure that we show him plans as we go along. And we will do things for the neighbors as well. You know, if it's a visual thing where we have to put a couple of trees in, uh, our intention is to do that because I think we have to be respective of what they have, but also what we have. Uh, I can say, we're not gonna have this albatross that's gonna be sticking out of a piece of property. I think it's gonna be very, very well laid out, so. That whole process is coming together. They took more ideas and more things that we, uh, we wanted to move some space, we wanted to redesign the office area. I don't know, you guys can jump in whatever else we talked about. It was, we talked about everything, we were here for several hours, so. Uh, overall, it's, it's come pretty good and I think we'll have something visible to show you relatively soon, I hope. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to put on there was just more of an update.
That's a question.
Oh, I'm just.
Same topic. Have we had, have you had any conversations or do the point yet of having conversations with like the planning commission and any of that stuff?
We got a meeting, our first city meeting on February twenty-first, I think it is. Jim, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So I just remember some of the snafus that came up with the high school project and we wanna make sure, stay in front of that one. I just wasn't sure if we had those talks yet or not.
Planning meeting or a concept review?
It's neither. It's to start the ball rolling, to make sure that the, we had problems last year where we would go down there, get things done according to what we were told, bring them back, and then all of a sudden we'd be ready to go and they'd say, oh no, you gotta do this too. And we wanna get out of that. We want things done around front, so we're gonna have a meeting to say, what exactly do you need, when do you need it? Are you sure that's all we need, those kinds of things? Um, and the people that we have, the architects and so on, and, and Jim, Mark and I will be going down for that meeting. It's gonna be, be fine, you know, we wanna do, we wanna be good partners, but at the same time, we, we wanna, don't wanna play games. And they tell us what we need and we'll certainly do it and, and we know there are a lot of things that we have to do in terms of code and permits and those kinds of things, so.
Bring a recorder.
Pardon me?
Yeah, bring a recorder, then you can refer back to, know exactly what was said.
Yeah, probably a good idea. Any other questions? Uh, the second item on there is just a foundation update. Nick and Chris met with the foundation leadership at the beginning of the year, then we met, Nick, Chris and I met with them again a couple of weeks ago. Uh, basically it was the same meeting. Uh, they're going through quite a change, I think, a, a leadership change and a whole structural change in terms of how they operate as a foundation. Uh, and one of the things we wanted to make sure that we got our point across in terms of saying how we viewed the foundation and how we're gonna be receptive to them. We certainly wanna work with them. They've been, you know, they've given us over a million dollars over the last several years. And I'm gonna call on Nick and Chris in a minute just to give you an overview of what we presented to them in writing. Uh, what basically it still comes down to is the foundation gets requests. Uh, in the past, they would get numerous requests from teachers and so on, and it was, it was really helter-skelter. We had teachers that would make a, a request to the foundation, the foundation would approve it without our knowledge. And then all of a sudden, we've got equipment laying around that we're not even using. Or we might have, uh, technology, now I'm talking in the past, several years. We might have technology in the fourth grade classroom at Countrydale, but now what happened to the other fourth grade classes throughout the district? So we had equity issues in terms of what we were doing, all with good intent. Nobody was maliciously trying to, to do anything wrong, but it was not an organized process that really filtered through the way we wanna do things. The last couple of years, and you've heard us say this a number of times, we have really tried to structure ourselves towards a vision of where we wanna get and how we're gonna get there in a very, you know, strategic manner, if you will. Uh, and so all we're asking is that when we get the requests, that those requests, and they always have come through the building principals. But now we want them to make sure that they go through Nick and Chris to make sure they align with what we're doing from a curriculum and a programming standpoint. So with that, Chris, you wanted to give just a brief snapshot of what, of what we talked about?
Yeah, so from a K eight perspective, um, I submitted a report to the foundation that they're going to be, their core team reviewed. And they'll be reviewing as a, um, entire board at their next meeting. And really, we're looking to build a three-year campaign with them from a K eight perspective of revamping our classroom libraries to meet our literacy needs in our curriculum for, through readers and writers workshop. As you're aware, at K six, this year, we implemented writers workshop through Columbia Teachers College. Next year will be readers workshop. And so we've engaged our teachers in audits of their classroom libraries and to Dr. Pat's point, in the past, you know, teachers buy things out of their own pocket. They might get foundation money or building money and they buy books, but there's not a synchronized plan around leveled font and panel to meet the needs of all learners. So we've engaged our teachers in some preliminary work and our principals will keep working with them, um, this month of February, so that they can audit their libraries. We can have equity across the district and we wanna build a campaign with the foundation so that, um, we have a driving force to raise money to build robust classroom libraries across the district. So it's not, to Dr. Pat's point, this school had this dollar amount and they used all their money here, or parents or PTO gave money. And then the other schools don't have those same, similar opportunities. So we're hoping to, twenty thousand books for twenty years of service of Franklin Education Foundation or something like that so that all fundraising efforts and maybe PTOs as well join in towards a common goal over time versus a one-time deal. So that's kind of where we're coming from. A K eight, a proposal was sent, um, with research, a research base as well as an action step and timeline to work with the foundation coincide over the next few years.
Thanks, Chris. Nick, you want to review?
Yeah, so a similar proposal for the nine-twelve lens. We, uh, when we met with them a couple of times this year, we agreed uh, that we would submit proposals both from a K eight perspective and from a nine-twelve perspective. Uh, and a lot of the report that was submitted from the nine-twelve side you, you've heard about already, it, um, connected to our fabrication space at the high school. Uh, certainly we have a short-term plan there that we had presented to you, but we also have a long-term vision for that space. Uh, we thought we might be able to accelerate some of that long-term vision, um, with some help from the foundation. Uh, and we talked to them about how, how that vision aligns with our education for employment work, all of the work that our, uh, community experience coordinator is doing, the curricular changes you heard about from an internship and youth apprenticeship perspective. So we feel like that all comes together and the foundation might have a unique opportunity to help us fundraise and support uh, and advance some of those equipment purchases for that space.
So as Chris and Nick said, there's a plan in place in terms of what we're gonna dedicate funds to if we were to get those. And I'm glad you mentioned, because the PTA, we have to make sure that we acknowledge them too. They do a lot for our schools and we wanna try to get some coordination there so they meet the plan. Uh, the, the one thing that we're gonna have to do district-wide is make sure that our staff is aware that, you know, we're funneling these things through the plan. It's not just a random, I would like this and I would like, uh, all those things are great, but they're, they're not part of a, of a bigger plan that is meant to serve all the kids in every building. So I think it's a good plan. Uh, Nick and Chris did an outstanding job of getting that submitted to them. I think they're acting on their board meeting. We just got an email today.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Uh, so, um, like I said, they're going through some transitions, but, uh, I think from our end, we've, uh, we have, we've approached them, said, here's what we're looking for, here's what we wanna do. So they know where these funds would be dedicated and I think it's a good plan.
So those are meetings that you called to have because you had kind of things coming in, helter-skelter, and you wanted to get a little more.
Well, I, the first one I called was very early in the year, just with the leadership that's here in our building. And they've, they've got co-presidents now and so on, but they've gone through two, three or four different people that have been sitting in the office here. And each year, it was a different way of doing things and, you know, we would like you to do this and so the next year, somebody new would come in there and it would change. And so we wanted to get an idea of where are we going now. Uh, Sherry Hanneman is running this office now and doing a real nice job and keeps us well-informed and a great person to communicate with. So, uh, we just wanted to make sure that the foundation knew that we weren't gonna have our entire staff just submitting all kinds of stuff. It was gonna be on a unified plan, uh, a long-term plan, three years enrolling. And so that we don't have some of the discrepancies we had and so that nobody's guessing where is this coming from. And, uh, I think the foundation, because they've changed a great deal in terms of their leadership and they have new vision and so on and so forth. Uh, we wanna make sure that, uh, we have good communication in terms of what our role is as a school district and we wanna know what, what their role is and vice versa, so.
I might add, I may, I am the foundation representative, so I would concur that, um, that's kind of the change in focus. And I think over the years, you're right, it was all, teachers would submit, they would always focus on teachers. Not that that's a bad thing, but, um, but I could see some of the requests that I reviewed and asked to approve were like, you know, robotics, you know, equipment for this school, but what about the other school? Uh, computer equipment was always an issue because why doesn't the district do that? So there'd be those kind of questions. So we're in a different place than we were the last twenty years. And I think we understand that it's more of a, um, like you said, more of a strategic plan or a district-wide effort to kind of focus things. I'm not su, but there still might be a place for teachers. I don't know if, because I do wanna support the teacher in the classroom and I don't know what the answer is there.
Well, but that's why we have the plan.
Right.
The plan has to be generated because, uh, from a district standpoint, we know what we're, what our focus is. It's literacy, it's math, it's those kinds of things. So we wanna make sure our teachers, you know, and they're doing it with good intentions. There's no, we're not saying that at all. But, you know, we, we can't have somebody wanting to buy a case of dinosaur statues because do something, we don't even talk about dinosaurs anymore. Uh, it's gotta be related to what we're doing because we're putting an awful lot of time and effort and resources into making sure that we talk about improving instruction. It's very red, not regimented, but it's very specific in terms of what we wanna do and where we wanna get. And so we, we can't open that Pandora's box up to, everybody submit what you want. It, it has to be aligned to what we're doing as a district.
We don't talk about dinosaurs?
There's no more dinosaurs, they're dead.
How was that received?
The dinosaurs?
A plan, how was that received?
Well, we just, to the staff?
Yeah.
We haven't submitted, addressed with the staff, we've addressed with our principal.
To the foundation, I mean, not, not the.
We haven't heard back from them yet.
We haven't had a meeting, a board meeting since, we haven't had a board meeting since they met. But you are involving teachers in the plan. You didn't mention you involved your classmates.
Correct, it's part of, it's part of a systematic plan of literacy, instruction and learning for kids. So this is a component of that, that we, we have funding, funds at the building level and district level, but not enough to revamp our classroom library. So this is where that additional funding would come in.
I will say though, in the, the last twenty years though, that the focus, the thought was that some of these, you know, creativity that teachers bring and, you know, their role in the classroom. We, we look to them to kind of drive some innovation. That was kind of the thought. But now, innovation comes from where? But now, innovation comes from where in education?
I think we look, we look to them for innovation as well, and we support those efforts, as long as they align with our focus and where we're going, so I think from a.
That hasn't flown away, you're, which requires some communication with them, close communication as far as what they, you know, what's happening. We don't want to lose sight of what happens every day, like you said, in the classroom with our teachers.
Right. I mean, I think it makes sense, some of the ones that we reviewed last year, you know, related to canoes for the, for the environmental science class, some exercise equipment for the middle school, and some of them were very focused to certain student populations. So I, you know, I totally understand the, the view that we can hit every one of our elementary schools or every class at the middle school with a literacy goal, you know, I, sitting in the class, I sat in a class a couple of months ago, you know, and every kid was reading a different book, because they were allowed to select whatever type of fiction or nonfiction book, whatever topic that they were on, and, and it was, it was a wide variety, from reading a sports book that someone brought from home, or, or a true novel that they took from the, from the library that they had in class. So I, I can definitely see the disparity that probably exists throughout the district. So I, I think that's a, it's a good idea, I think, you know, unfortunately, we might lose a little bit of the, I don't know, for lack of a better term, creativity from, from individual teachers to say, oh, you know, I can, we can go on a, on a field trip with kids in a canoe to, or buy additional canoes, because they think, they think they had some already, but not enough for the whole class, that type of thing. I think that might get lost a little bit, but I think that there's probably the greater need in the focused approach in, in attacking the district needs. And I also think that the equity argument is a fairly strong one.
I got a lot of calls over the years, well, why does this building have this, and my kids own this, and one PTA group will raise a lot of money to do this, and, you know, why aren't you giving us more money so we can do more? Well, we had an issue this year with our K2, K1, K2 technology, and it was a big issue, and we, but we had to stand firm on it because we had to get back on track.
I was just going to actually bring up a question, when it, when it relates to PTAs, PTOs, are we also contacting them? We're saying these are kind of district needs, rather than having them say, let's go and buy a new whiteboard for every classroom, when maybe that's not necessarily.
Well, that's a good, that's a good example, because there are certain things that used to be the thing to get, those things aren't the thing to get anymore. There, technology in some of these areas has long since passed a whiteboard. And plus, talked about the creativity piece, there's better ways to do something than a whiteboard in, in many cases. But our principals have worked with our PTA presidents to be able to say, here's the direction we're going. At the same time, they, the PTAs and PTOs, you know, they have some interests and things they want to do with some funds, whether it's playground equipment or whatever it might be, so we have to be respectful of that, too.
Along those lines, I was going to ask the question, do you, being on, on the board, do you envision the educa, the foundation maybe wanting to go one route, but then the district going, well, actually, we have this equity issue, we want to align with what we're looking for?
I don't think there's going to be an issue with the new direction. I don't see one, but, I mean, but there's, it's a whole new board sitting there, I, I don't have a lot of experience. Everybody that's sitting there, but I have a good feeling that we, they were looking for direction, they're.
Yeah.
They're asking those questions, you know, are we viable?
That's good, that's healthy.
Are we viable, or what is our role? Because, you know, every kid's got a computer now, so what are we going to do? So those questions were there.
Well, in our meeting, there, there was a fundamental discussion, you know, and they talked about their involvement with the schools, and it, it veered into a path where they wanted to be involved in, in some curriculum stuff. That's not the role of the foundation, you know, the role, that's our role, that's what our responsibility is, but we want them to assist us and work, and we want to work with them to strengthen whatever that, if it's literacy in libraries, to strengthen our curriculum and so on and so forth, so. And it was just a discussion is all it was, and, and we just had to clarify that, though, because it was a, a point that they had brought up.
I think it's a good opportunity for them to be the connection to our community and businesses, because that's where they're, they are, they're building those contacts within the community, and that's what we need at the high school, so you can work with them. That's a role that they can play, is connect us stronger, in a stronger way to our community, economy, and, and businesses.
I would think with a plan, you know, they can take that to the donors, you know, versus just give us some money and we'll decide who gets it for what.
Correct.
So I would think having a plan is going to help them in terms of their donors.
One area, though, that I think we do see our PTOs and PTAs doing is, you know, like programming, bringing in somebody from the outside. Do we have, I'm going to say rules or ideas on how, is it allowed? Do you encourage it? Do we?
Do they like have meetings?
No, they bring in, like, they'll bring in an artist, or they'll bring in a writer. I've seen different programs that come into the school that somebody pays for, usually the PTO or PTA.
Our expectation is that it's related to a program that we're doing, and it has a curricular alignment with something we're doing. The one that comes to mind, I just looked at a picture of it today, was when they brought in the guest artist over at Southwood Glen, they made that paper mache bench. I happened to have been over there for a couple of days and watched them, and, and how that person and what they were doing was really specifically related to what the art curriculum was, but it talked about more than that, it talked about the career that, offshoot careers that go off of learning these skills that they were using to build this bench, so.
That's some of the, where the, where the PTO comes in, it's not so much things anymore, it's, it's programming, and.
Right.
That was an area that the foundation wasn't going to do, but I don't know what the future would be on that.
Yeah.
Or even field trips, I mean, do we do?
They have to have a purpose, and they have to have value, you know, other than maybe the kindergartners going to the pumpkin patch.
It's not going away.
That's still got a lot of value.
It's not going away with the dinosaurs?
No. I shouldn't have brought up.
Dinosaur statues?
If you've been in education, you know that it, a common thing years ago was, teachers always want to have a dinosaur unit. Well, it drove us nuts as administrators, what value does this dinosaur unit have? Because it was more or less about building paper mache dinosaurs than anything, and so it's sort of a longstanding joke in education to get rid of the dinosaurs.
Okay, then.
The Pat's meteor.
Item 10, future agenda items. We have the instructional services report, the annual assessment report on February 22nd. Anything else?
You ready for that?
Yep, for sure.
Okay.
Is it too early for the budget?
Yes.
Look at state budget coming out, great news.
Sounds like it.
Okay. Item 11, 11 is the board meeting debriefing, and Larry, this card up here is what we should be following for what we call a board meeting debriefing, but sometimes the board members just make a comment on something that went on in the board meeting. So, does anyone have any comments on the board meeting?
I guess I'm always amazed at what, how different the counselors are than what I remember.
Oh, yes.
School counselor, it's so much more compelling and important.
I would say, and it's a great credit to Nick, our counselors have really upped their game in the last couple of years.
I would say they have.
But I think we brought in, Catherine Reed has been, always been a dynamo, but we brought in Mindy Willard, who you've met before, she was the National Counselor of the Year several years ago at her previous district. So we're bringing in people that have a fundamental background that really assists us to, to drive our programs forward, it's, it's really proven to be an asset for us.
I'll mention this, what was the conference that they held at the high school that we were at? It was like a, like an open house, they went through the behavior models, I sat right next to you.
Oh, good.
Oh, the, that's their, that's their, yeah, their community advisory group.
Okay. So, I mean, to shed, shed some light on, I think they went around the room and they just asked how your interaction was with your high school counselor to parents or, or kids in the district, and, and it was amazing to me how, or what a large percentage of the, of people said they either never had contact with their counselor, or the contact was the last week of school, saying, see ya. No career discussion, no real discussion about problems in school, versus how I think a lot of the students currently are having weekly, monthly discussions of, hey, how's it going, you know, I got into X school, or I'm thinking about this career. It's eye-opening to see how, how much they've moved the needle.
Yeah, I think they're, they're too humble sometimes to, to tell you the things that are going on, you know, Mindy and Catherine are going to go out and present at the national conference, they've been accepted to present out in Denver, and the high school teams have all been accepted to present at the state conference coming up in a couple of weeks, so they'll have a session out there that they're delivering, so they're being asked really on a national level and a state level to share their expertise with their colleagues on a regular basis, so they've done a lot of work.
Linda, you asked a question, I just want to make a quick point on that. When you talk about college and career readiness, and, you know, it's college and it's career, and we live in a community that there is this college expectation, but we have a high number of students that are very interested in the hands-on types of programs, our tech ed programs and so on, and these kids, once they find out how lucrative some of those